I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mike, would you mind taking role for us?
I could do that. Okay, Chairperson Fox.
Here.
Jeff Newsome, he's absent. Keith Boyt, absent. Joe Kalani.
Here.
Sue Grissom. Tom Murphy.
Here.
Mike Mitchell, here.
All right, thank you, Mike. Next up, item four, approval of our meeting agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Motion from Kalani, second from Mitchell. Any changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posnay, motion carries. Next up, item five A, approval of our April 11th, 2019 meeting minutes.
So moved.
Support.
Motion from Commissioner Mitchell, second Commissioner Kalani. Any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posnay, motion carries. Next up, item five B, approval of our April 25, 2019 meeting minutes.
So moved. Support.
Motion from Commissioner Kalani, second from Commissioner Murphy. Any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posnay, motion carries. Item six, call to the public. Anyone think not? Okay, we'll move on to item seven A. Tonight we have two site plans. First one being Site Plan Application Number 19-004. This is for the Kubota Bobcat dealership. So if you guys want to take a seat, in a minute we're going to have you introduce yourself. We're going to let Troy introduce the proposal to us, and we'll have you guys add anything you'd like to add. Troy?
Thank you. I'll start off by maybe just talking about the location. This is a zoning map of Heartland Township. Of course, US 23, the major highway going north and south, and then M 59. I'm going to zoom in, in this area. So the area we're looking at, if you were at the intersection of 23 and 59, would be just to the west of that intersection where Old US 23 and 59 are. And if you continued south on Old 23 into this area, you'll see this portion, there's property zone that's red, that would be a commercial, but the subject property is just south of that, and it's in the crosshatch configuration. It's sandwiched between Old US 23 and US 23. That indicates that it's in a PD or planned development zoning category. What I can do is try to pull up just a general, no, that one's not very clear, site plan here of the property with Old 23 kind of on the south side of this page, and then US 23 on the north side. So what the applicant is proposing is to establish a Kubota Bobcat dealer at this location. The applicant has been in front of the planning commission on a couple prior instances. He originally came to the planning commission in a different location and requested a use determination for his dealership. At that time, the planning commission determined it was similar to automobile sales. He then came back to the township, indicated there'd been a change in his business plan. He would need more outdoor storage than he originally indicated. The staff person, I guess me, determined that probably wasn't consistent with what the planning commission had determined originally. The applicant indicated he had an interest in this location, which is the location he's at now, but this zoning was different than the prior interpretation. So we brought it back to the planning commission for a new interpretation of is this use permitted in this location. This property being zoned planned development, normally with a planned development, you would have a actual planned development agreement that would act much like a new zoning ordinance. No such document exists in this case. So the planning commission determined that this would be an appropriate location for this proposed use. Now the applicant's here with the site plan. Normally when you see a site plan, you're looking at a new proposed building, a new proposed parking lot, a new proposed development. That's really not the case here. The applicant's going to be occupying the existing facility, and they're going to be operating their new use at this location, and as such, they're just requesting site plan approval. I've went through the staff report, and you can see there, it's not the typical staff report because we don't have the typical zoning standards to apply in this location. So what you have there is a ballpark, well, I guess I'm giving you a ballpark estimate of, or explanation of the use, and then you can kind of see the detailed stuff in the staff report. If you've got questions, feel free to let me know.
All right, thank you. Now it's your turn. All you have to do is introduce yourself and anything you'd like to add.
I'm Ryan Wurtzel. I'm representing Carlton Equipment Company. I think that the site plan we submitted, I hope, fits the bill. It really is a perfect fit for us. Mr. Beauchamp's here, who operates out of there currently. So they're really, you aren't going to see any changes because he has a facility where we can do, you know, repair work and service work out of his shop, and then the retail center is going to be used just that, except different products. So I wish it was more exciting, but it's not. It's just going to be, I think, a really good fit for that building, that site, and then hopefully the community.
Perfect, perfect. What we'll do, as Troy mentioned, we typically have quite a lengthy site plan review letter, but we don't have anything in regards to length to it this time, and we don't have a lot of the categories we typically would have, but we'll still take a look at it. So we're going to pull up the staff review letter dated May 16, 2019, and at the bottom of packet, page 20, it just, this is where the site plan review starts, but the criteria or the items we're looking at really start on the top of page 21, and the intended uses on the existing site. I guess we'll just touch on this, these concrete bins and those types of things. You're removing those?
That's correct. Yeah, those are currently used by Mr. Beauchamp for loading out mulch and containing mulch, I guess you'd say. So those will be removed, and that will be an open lot.
Okay. So on your picture, I just have a quick question. You're not reallocating them around the site or anything, you're just removing them totally?
They're gone.
They're gone?
Yep.
He's taking them, not part of the deal, huh?
No. Wouldn't throw them in.
Any questions about that? So he's talking the landscape materials. Okay. Two equipment buildings, one's basically sales, the other's is service.
Correct.
Moving down the page there, retail office, we talked about that, similar, equipment similar, the parking, no change in the parking. Troy, you're saying it meets any parking requirements we would have for this district?
Yeah. If you, if you just basically took the square footage of his retail and office and calculated what would be required, he meets that.
Okay.
I would expect in this type of business, just kind of stepping away from the ordinance and just looking at reality, what happens here, I'm guessing from how this applicant has described it, a lot of his customers are probably driving a pickup truck with a trailer on it that is hauling a Bobcat or Kubota unit, and they pull in, they're probably not pulling into those designated parking spots that you see, they're probably pulling in somewhere else so they can unload or load a piece of equipment, if that makes sense.
That's an accurate depiction of it, yeah.
Okay. Any comments on that? It's all work for you guys. Okay, next up, landscape and screening. Again, we don't have a landscape plan, you're pretty much leaving the landscaping that's there?
Yes, yep.
So...
I threw that in.
He threw that in.
Did you? You're leaving the plants, Jared, huh?
No blocks, got to keep the plants and the landscaping.
Good deal. Looks like you might be adding some. Are you adding that south property line there?
Yes.
Okay.
There's going to be trees that we're going to add there for our kind of agreement to blockade that.
Somewhat screen it.
Yep.
Troy, you comfortable with the notation on the plan?
Yeah, there's, this plan showed, I think it was six proposed pine trees. That's my language in landscaping. I'm sure our landscape architect will want to know something a little more detailed as to what type of pine trees those are, but I'm sure we'll be able to work that out.
Okay. Any comments on that?
No.
All righty. Lighting, no changes. Just note, any signage you do on this is held through a separate application and is handled by staff, so when you get involved with that. I'm on packet page number 22 now. No exterior changes to the buildings.
No.
But you're making this just too...
Sorry.
Boring. You're all right. So any other requirements of the zoning ordinance? Do we have none? DPW has no comments. Engineer and fire department have no comments. Do we have any questions or comments from the PC?
None.
All righty. If not, we're ready to entertain a motion there on packet page number 22.
Move to approve the site plan application number 19-004, which is a request to establish a Kubota Bobcat dealership at 948 Old US 23. Approval is subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant shall adequately address the outstanding items noted in the planning department's memorandum dated May 16, 2019, subject to an administrative review by the planning staff prior to the issuance of a land use permit. And number two, applicant complies with any requirements of the Department of Public Works Director and the Heartland Deerfield Fire Authority.
Okay, we have a motion to approve site plan application 19-004 for Kubota Bobcat dealership from Commissioner Mitchell, second from Commissioner Murphy. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posnay, motion carries. Congratulations.
That was excellent.
Welcome to Heartland.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next one, 7B, site plan application 19-005, Livingston County Drain Commissioner Septage Receiving Station. Another great topic. Come on up, guys. We'll do the same thing. We'll let Troy introduce the topic, and then anything you guys would like to add. Maybe introduce yourself at that time.
All right, thank you.
Troy?
I'll go back to the zoning map to illustrate where this property is located. This is US 23 going north and south. This property is located a little further north in the M 59 interchange. It's actually up near the Clyde Road interchange, so this being Clyde Road here. The property is just south of Clyde Road on what's called Runyon Lake Road, so the site's visible from 23 just to the east side of that. So this is the general location. It's zoned GC, general commercial, in this area. I've got a site plan of that I can pull up. So this is a general, I'll work from this one, it's a site grading plan, but I think it can show what we need. So this is Runyon Lake Road on this side of the site, and then this is the existing building. And how this works, and I'm not going to get into definitive details on this, but how this works is a truck, a septic truck would come in, pull in, and then unload here, and then would essentially drive off. The county drain commissioner's office has indicated that they need to increase this, the capacity at this facility, and so they have a new building proposed over in this location, and then two, I'll call them tanks, they're almost like farm, silos almost, if you will, here, that are part of this facility that could increase the ability of additional trucks come in and drop their stuff there and then move on. This involves some grading, and there's a storage building over here. The way we have this site worked out in the staff report is there's two options. Because of the grading on the south side of this, there's a regulated wetland. So the first, the original plan is to do grading in that wetland, and that requires a permit from what used to be the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, now that's the Eagle, and they're in the process of working with that entity right now. So what you also have is Plan B, which is to do a retaining wall in this area, and that retaining wall would be upwards of 10 feet at its maximum height, but it would extend for quite a distance on this south area here. So in the event they do not have success with the state of Michigan with that permit, we have in here a Plan B option. We are asking that you, if you decide to approve this, that you approve either of those so they do not have to come back to you. They are under a time crunch. They have some mandates that they have to meet, and our goal is to try and assist them as much as possible with meeting their time deadline. So that's an overview of the site. They're trying to match that second building with the first building as best as they can. And if you have questions, I'll be available to help answer.
All right, thank you. If you'd like to introduce yourself and anything you would like to add, we're going to go through that staff review letter after that.
Okay. I'm Michelle LaRose, the deputy drain commissioner, and then this is Jeff Landers, our engineer from Warren-Burgin, and we have Rob Spalding, our DPW coordinator. Just a couple of things I want to touch on, just to expand on what Troy said. The time crunch is because we have a corrective action plan from Genesee County, that's where we send our flows, and our flows right now are very concentrated with solids. So this new facility will press out the solids and then just send the flows there, and then we take the solids to a landfill. And they're giving us a June of 2020 deadline to complete construction. So that's where that time crunch comes in. And then I did want to give an update, too, since we last met with Troy and he did his report, we did meet with the DEQ or the Eagle now. We had a pre-application meeting onsite. We walked through their concerns with the wetlands. There was nothing that we felt would hold up them issuing a permit, just walking through different options as to how we can minimize the impacts of the wetlands. So we did end up submitting that permit application, so that's under their review right now.
Anything else? No? You want to ask a question?
This is a press facility, so the waste that's in the press facility, is there an odor control program, odor control program in place for that?
Yes, we're adding odor control to the building, the new building facility and the tanks themselves.
And will the, there's no outside storage of solids that, it's always kept inside, correct?
Correct.
I think that, those were my main questions. So you understand what they're doing? They're taking the solids out?
Well, kind of.
Right now, everything goes into the pipe and goes out when the septic towers come in, and it's sent, it's screened a little bit, though, isn't it? Before it's...
Right, we have screens, but then it sends it up to Genesee.
Sends it up to Genesee. And then this is a facility that, it's like a pretreatment almost. They stop, they take out the solids, they press all the liquid out, the liquid then is processed and then sent through the pipe, and then the solids are actually collected and sent to a landfill.
So out of curiosity, these solids, are they just hauled out in a dump truck like you'd get mulch delivered to your house, only it would be something else? Is that how it goes?
Yeah, we will have large dumpsters that it'll just dump into, and then as they get full, we have them trucked out and sent into the landfill.
So do they keep the lid closed on the dumpster when they're driving through, or all that kind of stuff?
Yeah.
Typically, they, typically they have the rollover...
Cover.
Yeah, cover that goes on them.
And it actually ends up in a drain field, or excuse me, in a landfill?
Pardon?
It ends up in a landfill?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
So to expand on Joe's question, the liquids that are pressed out, where, curiosity, where does that end up?
So that will go from the new building where we press, down a gravity pipe, back to the existing wet well that's on site underneath the existing septage receiving facility, and then pumped up to Jackson County.
Well, so there's literally a pipe from that location to Genesee County up to the...
Yeah, this is essentially a large lift station, so everything right now goes into one common wet well. That's Heartland Township's municipal waste along with the septage. Those are commingled within the wet well that's on site, and then pumps in the basement, pump that to Genesee County.
It goes to the Linden wastewater treatment plant. That's where it's pumped to.
Thank you. Okay, well, let's take a look at the staff review letter dated March, or March, May 16, and I am starting on packet page number 46. Few more things to look at here, but again, not much tonight. Easy evening for us here. Down towards the bottom, we see site plan review, applicable standards. We've already got the site description, so now I'm moving over to page 47. No impact assessment was required, no traffic study, generation, anything was required there. The lot size is, you're meeting the lot size requirements, your road frontage is acceptable. Building setbacks, storage tank one and storage tank two and the storage bin facility themselves are all meeting the required setbacks. I'm on packet page number 48. Up at the top, the detached accessory building setbacks, we just talked about those. We're talking about the heights. We have a 35-foot maximum requirement. They're well under those at 29, 25, 6, and 12, 6 in height, so we have no issues there. Troy, at some point, I do want to show them when we get there, the silos, what they look at. There was a picture.
Yeah.
And while you're looking for that, we'll continue on lot coverage. We're fine there. Parking, we're going to just use the parking that exists on site. There's plenty of open space. No need for striping. Landscape and screening. Comment here is, did you decide just to remove the trees and cut them down?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We tried using them elsewhere in the county and...
Doesn't work.
...it's been too involved.
Yeah. So take them out, and they're going to put 45 new trees in surrounding the facilities. Those were those black dots on the page that just went by. Troy, you want the landscaping requirements on the construction set up plan?
Yes, if that is...
There you go.
So this is an example of that, those silos and what they, I call, that's my term, that's not their term when I say silos. That's what this looks like, so I don't mean to not refer to it the proper term, so...
It's septage storage tanks or equilibrium tanks.
Would that be about...
Silos is...
Essentially, they hold the material until it can be pressed. It allows for just a buffer for the process.
So those are about 25 feet high. The building is 29.
Yeah, and just on the height, because we did talk with them about can't we lower these into the ground a little bit, maybe reduce the height and the visual impact. Apparently, the water table in this location is quite high, so they really can't, that's as I understand it, they really can't sink these into the ground much.
So on that note, are there existing tanks that are buried that are currently being used?
There is, just the wet well and attached to the existing building.
Troy, you went to that original site plan?
Yeah.
Where the, where the, can I go up there and...
Sure.
They have a pointer.
They got that up there.
Yeah, on the existing building, the south side of the building, right there is, right there is a wet well. There's two patches there. That's essentially what we call the five road pump station. That's where all the flows currently go make to it. Then if you go further into the building, right about approximately that area, there's 235,000 gallon eggs that the trucks dump into currently right now and draw from that thing. Those tanks into that lot well is how it's set up. Does anyone need a point?
No, I think, no, just curiosity, are they concrete or are they stainless steel like I think the newer tanks?
It's a concrete, it was a port, port.
So everybody cool with that? Okay. They're going to look like silos on a farm.
The silos, are they going to be metal like that on the outside, or there's not, okay, there's no special siding or anything like that?
No. We had talked with them about could this come in a color, or could it come in a, could you apply a paint to it? We ultimately decided, when we were at the site plan review committee, to kind of just live with this. The thoughts were that that could become a long-term maintenance problem. They have to apply, it's not as if they make this and it can be made into whatever color you want. Something is applied to that, and I'm just not technically gifted enough to explain all this, but something's applied to it that could, over time, cause maintenance to that.
I just have a question. Is this outside crane, is that the construction, or is there going to be an apparatus outside crane for any use at all?
It's a permanent crane?
Yeah.
There won't be a permanent?
There won't be a permanent crane, okay.
Yeah, that crane won't be there. That's...
I'm just familiar with pump stations, and there's one I'm working on that has an outside crane that's permanent, so...
So they describe these silos as actually being formed and made right on site? Didn't you say they're rolling the...
Yeah, it's rolled galvanized steel with stainless steel interior face on them, and they're built actually from the ground up on site.
So they don't truck the parts in, they're...
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Everybody comfortable with that? That was the one thing in the site plan review meeting that we had to make a call on, and we just were afraid if they painted it, we would see flaking paint and maintenance issues.
So I agree 100%. I think that was the right call to not have that just going forward to a maintenance issue.
Okay, so let's see here. We are on, we just talked about the trees, and Troy wants to get that on the construction plans. Lighting there is shielded and downward directed lighting proposed. Water supply on top of packet page 49. We have nothing to talk about there. Architectural and building materials. The keynote here was that they are attempting and have done a reasonably good job of matching the existing structure. They're going to be off on a couple percentages of building materials, as you see, but Troy, do you have their renderings of the building there?
I do. Let me pull them up. So this is the existing building, south elevation, and then what they're proposing, maybe, I'll pick on this one. So it, what they're doing is mimicking those same building materials in the same general proportions. The building is slightly designed differently architecturally. This is more of a block square versus the other one has some more shape to it. So I think for what the shape of the building is, they're matching it about as good as you can do that.
Work for you guys? So it's consensus, the architecture and the deviation of building materials is okay? We already talked about the galvanized steel tanks. I had jumped ahead. The storage bar in the comment here was they were just assuming you would be using the same siding material that's on the gables of the Bain Building on the shed. Would that be correct? Same shingles?
Yes.
Kind of keeping it all together? Okay. I'm on the packet page number 50. We have no other requirements of the zoning ordinance, no DPW comments, engineers' comments. You guys are okay with? You read his letter?
Yes.
You're good?
Yep.
Okay. And Deerfield, Heartland Deerfield Fire Authority, you're good with that letter?
Yes.
Okay. Any other further questions for them, comments? Before we vote on this, you're doing this not only because of the percentage of solids, but in our meeting, you talked about the utilization of the facility, the number of gallons you thought you were going to be processing. Just if you could, those numbers were phenomenal, how much more use you're getting out of this. Do you remember what they are?
Yeah, so we thought the design would end up being up to 12 million max, and we were at, was it 28 million last year?
So they're over.
And so sometimes, so part of, since we're adding this press facility, which we're required to by Genesee County, we thought we add this extra bay in there as well because we get so much volume during peak times that sometimes the traffic is backing up onto Runyon Lake Road. So this third bay just gives, you know, allows more traffic flow so that it can be smoother, so...
But, a good thing.
Yeah. So does everyone know what the alternative?
Well, that's why I said good thing, but go right ahead. Well, that's why I said good thing, but go right ahead.
Well, before we add the septic receiving station, the septic haulers would rent land in the county, and it would be applied to the land. So it would be, this would, trucks would truck out to the land, these fields. And I think, didn't Livingston County adopt an ordinance and mandated that you could no longer do land applications?
Yeah. The facility was open.
That's what I thought, yeah. So I've been, I've seen this thing many times, and Brian John Keer gives a presentation at a number of different places. And when I worked at Oakland County, we also had a couple different septic receiving stations. This is the nicest septic receiving station. I think it has a pro shop in there, too. Anyway, but it is one of the nicest ones. And I think it actually, it's a great facility for the county, it's a great facility for the township and surrounding area. So anyway, so those are my comments.
Yeah, and mine was just when they gave the data that I think it's a good thing that it's going there, and I guess I'm glad you're exceeding your expectations. I don't know if you accept it from outside the county or not, but if it's not going on the land, that's got to be a good thing.
Yes.
So.
So that question, is it accepted from outside the county?
It is, yes. And we have, the haulers have a manifest where they record where they're bringing from. But we do have some Oakland County haulers that, quite a few that use our facility.
And so the capacity of the new design, is that designed for projected growth?
Yes. It's currently, they're doing 26 to 28 million gallons a year. The new facility will be able to handle 40.
This is average?
It's an enterprise system. It's just so everybody understands, no one in Heartland or Tyrone who are part of the Livingston, Genesee County Regional Authority for Sewer System pay for the cost of this system. It's a standalone enterprise. So the septic haulers are the ones who pay for the cost to dump their loads there and have it treated. And so they pay for the treatment costs, they pay for the cost of the building, they pay for... So when you have your septic tank pumped, you're paying that cost as a septic. So non-sewer users in Heartland do not pay for this facility, just so everyone understands that.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just had one question. I want to go back to the meeting you had on site with the issue with the wetland. Did they offer any suggestion? I mean, were, did they give you any hint as to whether you can do some grading into that area? Or are you going to be forced to look at it?
It's not really their policy to offer suggestions.
Oh, okay.
What they look at primarily and the criteria that they will put this up against is, did we make every effort to not fill in, you know, as much as we could within reason?
That's why we also have the wall option.
Right.
You know, if they won't permit the work, that much work of the grading in the wet well, then we have the option of constructing that wall, which was amenable to that option when we discussed it in the field.
Yeah, I think that was a wise decision, to have prepared.
Yeah. And that's, I think Troy approached me whether we would be willing to send a motion, approve a motion that had an A and a B plan. And I think that under these circumstances, we would. So that is what you have in front of you here this evening. And we are ready for that if you so desire.
I'll make, recommend the motion, make a motion for site plan, for approval of site plan application 19-005, expansion of the Livingston County Drain Commissioner's septic receiving station located at 4682 Runyon Lake Road. The improvements include the construction of approximately 5,776 square foot building for septic pretreatment or press building, two storage tanks, detached accessory building, expanded paved areas, and the potential for retaining wall on the south side of the property. Option two plan. Approval is subject to the following conditions. The applicant shall adequately address the outstanding items noted in the planning department's memorandum dated May 16, 2019, on the construction plan set, subject to an administrative review of the planning staffs prior to the issuance of the land use permit. Two, applicant shall apply for and receive all applicable approvals and permits from the Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, formerly known as MDEQ, for the proposed work in the regulated wetland. Copies of the approvals and permits shall be submitted to the township prior to the issuance of the land use permit. Three, applicant complies with any other, any requirements of the Department of Public Works Director, Township Engineer, Consultant, Heartland Deerfield Fire Authority, and all other governmental agencies.
Support.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve site plan application 19-005 for the Livingston County Drain Commissioner's septic receiving station from Commissioner Kalaney, second from Commissioner Mitchell. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posnay, motion carries. Congratulations. I'd say welcome to Heartland, but you're already here. So glad business is going well.
They're in the, they're number one in the number two business.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Nice, Joe.
All right. Next up, item eight, call to the public. Anybody? Okay. Number nine, planners report. Troy, anything tonight?
I do have a couple of things. One, just to give you an update, the Ordinance Review Committee discussed the ordinance amendment to size of, minimum size requirements of single-family homes. We examined a survey of surrounding communities, found that we are not that much different than surrounding communities. There was some interest in possibly having a reduction in the size of the homes. However, the Ordinance Review Committee decided that with the tools of the planned development agreement, that any such need for a development with smaller homes could be met with those instruments that are already in place. And therefore, is essentially not recommending or recommending there be no changes to any of the size requirements for our single-family homes. So I'll share that with you. Second thing, I did send you an email. The Gibbs Planning Group has completed their new report. What I attempted to do, this is a copy of that, the report was sent just to you guys not that long ago. What I tried to do was set up a meeting where Bob Gibbs could come back and give a presentation on this. Unfortunately, with his schedule, he does not have any time available on nights that the planning commission meets on Thursdays through the whole summer. So what I thought I would do is at least share that we've got this, maybe just highlight some of the updates for you. The report indicates now that there could be, the township could support up to 116,800 additional square feet of retail and restaurant development. And then by 2025, that could go to 133,700 square feet. And then ultimately, by 2035, it could be up to just shy of 160,000 square feet of additional retail and restaurant development. And he did clarify that that would include, for example, the Ramco development. That presumes that's already built out. So this is in addition to any existing shopping center that exists in the township. So those are his findings. Just on a side note, I did spend a little time talking to him, not that I know how these numbers are arrived at. He did mention that as Heartland Township were to become more and more of a retail center, it actually increases the amount of potential retail that could be generated. When I say retail, I'm including restaurants in that. So as we have more retail and restaurants, it actually has the potential to increase those numbers. So I'll share that with, how much, I have no idea, but I'll share that with you. That's just a quick summary of those. I thought what we would do is, at our next meeting, we have just one case on that agenda, we could discuss this in a little more detail at our next meeting and maybe come up with some questions we might have. I can certainly try to answer some questions, but other questions, we can kind of prepare for Mr. Gibbs at a subsequent meeting. So that's all I've got.
Okay, so make sure you read it before two weeks from now. Have your questions.
I will not be here the latter part of June. Taken some time off, go out of town.
Did you get that approved?
I got it approved from Troy.
Oh.
He said yes.
He said yes. Well, we are going to have this on our next meeting agenda. We are having a meeting in two weeks.
Yes, this is early June, so we should all be here.
Early June meeting, so we'll have some discussion. Bring any questions you got. We'll just strategize how we proceed after that.
Okay.
As to what the questions are.
That would be June 6th.
June 6th, is that our?
June 6th.
That's the first two weeks.
Okay.
No, that doesn't sound right. We are typically the second and fourth Thursday, so I'm not looking at a calendar, but I'm just envisioning how the 6th could be a second Thursday. I'm guessing it's the 13th.
It's three from now, it's the 13th, yeah.
Oh, it's three weeks.
Three weeks from now. So I'm not traveling with Joe, but I won't be here either.
I'll be here on the 13th.
He's going to be here on the 13th. If you're not going to be here on the 13th, and after you read the report, any questions you have, if you would submit them to Troy via email, that would be great. Is that fair?
Surely is, yeah.
Just because you missed, you still have to do the homework. Anybody else? Okay. Committee reports, comments? Not, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Support? We have Kalaney and Murphy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posnay, motion carries. We're done. Thank you.